Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Everyone should have received the minutes from the last meeting, May 15th. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And everyone has agenda before them? Are there any additions or corrections for the agenda?
My additions are noted on yours.
Okay. If not, I would take a motion.
So. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. 4A, we have the West River Telcom easement. Any wish to have a copy of that?
Yeah, I think they're logic. I have it explained logic. Here's Peace Lutheran Church Parsonage and Senior Citizen Center. Back, what West River is asking for is they're gonna be coming across on the patio homes up here, coming down approximately here with the fiber optic serve the parsonage in the church. And then they're gonna run over here and be on the west side of Peace Lutheran, so they'll be getting an easement from them. And then coming down roughly through here is where the property line is for the Senior Citizen Center, the city property. And so they want a 30-foot easement that comes through back here to where they can end up getting over here, so then they can end up serving the low-income house over here as well as some of the properties are down here. Might point out that in 2011, MDU had to get in there and change out some power lines and change a transformer that actually sits about up over here. So we've given MDU an easement for that south 30 feet. And this basically same description, same location that West River was asking for here.
So they would share the same easement that MDU has current? They gonna be setting pedestals or anything back there as well, or just trenching it?
It'd just be the trenching, there might be a pedestal, I get down to this corner, there might be one. And there might, could be one over here in this corner when they start going out, get into the low-income housing and stuff like that. I say MDU when they, the reason that MDU wanted one in here is because they had to upgrade their line. It's a transformer, like I said, it sits over here. The transformer was kind of precarious, it's kind of leaning and stuff in there, so they wanted to replace that. And then they had to get over here, which when they came over here, where they just came across and got tied into parsonage's property and stuff. The parsonage put in electric key, the line here weren't big enough to carry that extra load.
Kind of funny why they have to zig and zag, you know, come down, over, down, over.
Well, there's zigzagging all over the place. But, you know, part of the problem is, is that the way that this was all platted out and there weren't any, actually going all the way over from 3rd Avenue, from 7th down to 5th, or, excuse me, from 7th down to 5th, and from 4th Avenue east to 3rd Avenue west, used to only be one subdivision, they're all in Dinosaur Edition. And then over time, parts of it got replatted and so forth. This is still part of the Dinosaur Edition. When you get over here to 2nd, then you get into Mark Noster 1st Edition and 2nd Edition. Down here, it's actually called the Walter 9th Edition, down by Barfield and stuff. That's a different one, so that's, but it was all replatted and there really weren't any alleys outside of the Mark Noster Edition, there was some alleys put in there, but.
We've already got an MDU easement there, and it's going on the same description, I guess. I make a motion that we approve the easement as described.
Second. We have a motion and a second, is there discussion? If not, roll call?
Miller.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye. Motion carried. Any on the MDU easement?
Yeah, no, that's a different one.
Okay.
This has got to do with the development over in Heritage Park that you could be doing over here. Shannon and I went over there, they wanted to kind of know where the back property line were. There was only, well, we did find a pin up here and one down here. And actually, you can see the shadows where these poles are. They were hoping that they could stay out of railroad property rather than having to get an easement from there. And actually, these poles that are here, that property line follows roughly where you can see the head line here and comes on down. What they'll want to end up doing is there'd be a new line that comes across the back here and then serves those different locations that Lauren was talking about. And then they're going to have a transformer that will be set up over here. There is a platted easement that runs here, it's only 10 feet wide. And then there's also an easement that runs on the west side of the, excuse me, the east side of the library, and that's a 20-foot wide easement. However, when Lauren was over there and felt that MDU met with her, apparently one of their plans shows some other gazebo or something going in this corner, so they didn't want to have the power line coming down here and going up this way. The other thing that they want to end up doing is they want to put a berm across here, much like what we've got back here by the parking lot. That berm ended up being on the property line, and so MDU didn't want to have their lines buried under trees. And the berm down the road, there's a failure, so what they're asking for is a 20, or an easement in the south 20 feet of these lots, so they could end up getting that line placed in location that will be north of the berm and more accessible, shouldn't they have to get in there and do anything? And then the other easement would end up coming up across over here, so they could still come up this way and put that pedestal, or the transformer up in this location here. So those are the descriptions that are on there as far as that's general idea.
Is there something going in that easement that's already just to the east of the library? Where they're gonna put this gazebo and stuff?
I don't, I don't think so.
Is it just a platted easement with nothing in there?
It was just, it was just a platted easement, I think the idea being, you know, where we do, and there is another one down here further. What those are in there for typically is to, and they're another subdivision in the city, have a place to get out there, to run a street light, to come back from the power sources back here. And let Shannon do my notes.
So would the existing easement that's right along that road, the 10-foot wide easement disappear, and then this one would take its place?
Well, this one will actually be going, that easement just for the south, basically the south 10 feet of that lot. This is for the south 20 feet. So that easement is still gonna be there, but there's gonna be a berm that's over the top of it. And I don't know, I know West River came across, there was fiber optic and they served it from the alley. Yeah. Yeah, they wanted to avoid having to go into railroad for any, we've had, well, nobody here has had to deal with them. But I've been here long enough, Kennedy was on the board, been dealing with the railroad a few times. Yeah, if you can stay out of there right away, it's better off doing it.
I'm making a motion to approve the request on the MDU easement. The head of the pack, aye?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Roll call?
Pack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye. Motion carried. 5A, a local permit for a raffle from the Common Thread Quilters Guild?
We conduct an annual raffle in conjunction with the Arts and Crafts Association's event in November, so.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve the permit for this raffle for the Common Thread Quilters Guild.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Roll call?
Miller.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye. Motion carried. Then the next on the list is a fireworks sales permit for memory fireworks. And where are they gonna be holding it again?
They will be at the All Seasons Arena again. They have gotten agreement for lease with Hazen Winter Sports for the facility. I did speak with Chief Burling as far as approval by the fire department. He wasn't able to get in to sign this, but he did give me a verbal approval that it would be acceptable to him as they've used this facility for the last several years for the fireworks. Make a motion, we approve Mr. Henshaw's desire to have the application to sell fireworks at the All Seasons Arena.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Roll call?
Miller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye. Motion carried. 5C is observation and comments from Ken Peterson?
I assume that, because I don't know any of you guys, you don't know me. I moved to Hazen in June of 82 and was here until 2011, about 29 years. And I have good comments and some not so nice. But number one is first, I spent nine years, my wife and I spent nine years, seven years running the RV park. So every time I come back to Hazen, it gets a personal inspection. And I know that's not your bad, like, but the little gal that's running the park, her only responsibility is to come for station and manage and collect and money. And she's doing fantastic job, just pets for your notes. But now, there's a road to the east of the park that goes up to those houses. You guys need to do something about that, that's horrible. If an RVer comes down, you gotta go out that way, they're going through railroad there. And it wouldn't take anything to get greater in both there. That's number one. The other thing is, I used to brag about Hazen being the best town. I've lived in Seattle, I've lived in Idaho, I've lived in Tennessee, and I've lived in Hazen. And I always said Hazen was nicest, cleanest town that I've ever lived in. I spent almost 30 years here, it's not that way today. Somebody needs to go around this town. Now, we lived on 7th Street Northwest. I'll mention a couple of names, we were residents between Quinn's and Johnson's. We owned the house in, no, I can't think of people that are living there now. But I think that if, when we sold that house in 2002, if I tried to sell that house, if it's the way it looks now, I would still be trying to sell that house. Somebody's gotta, you know, and it goes on all over Hazen. You go up here and it's part of town, it's a dump. Okay, that's all I have to say. You need to have somebody go around to police this town, because it doesn't, I could never say what I used to say. I just couldn't, because it isn't that way anymore, and I don't know what happened. But somewhere, somehow, I know you have a lot more people from the oil field, that could be part of it. But you guys have a responsibility to maintain this town. That's all I gotta say. So we just put that down, it's just my opinion now, okay? But it's worth something, like I spent 30 years here, and this town is a great town, so.
And it has been brought up before, the cleanliness, and I think we're working on it, we have a procedure.
Well, this time, if I drive down 7th Street, and you tell me if you buy one of those houses.
And I've been walking around, and there are some places where you go, I'm not sure why they don't haul this stuff out or why it's sitting there, I, yeah.
That's all.
Okay.
You guys have a good one.
Thank you.
You guys, thank you. That is a problem I don't know how to fix. If people don't take pride in their own yards, how are you supposed to? Because if we call it junk, they might not. I mean, I just drove by somebody's house in the back of their yard, it's a horse trailer, full of garbage. How do you get rid of it?
Personal possessions.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a tough, it's a tough one, I don't know.
Well, I kind of along that line, we'll find out how I was gonna go here. And that may be something that you want to look at the ordinance and try and do something a little bit different, because, and I've got an email into Pat, I'm not sure which date we have to go by, but he suggested we end up doing this. Back on May 19th, there was a declaration of nuisance sign. We'd mailed one out, the person never picked it up. And then it was kind of a error on my part, I thought it was husband and wife. I think it was father or mother and son of old property. So that's why, because of the path after that, we had the declaration delivered to the guy's girlfriend on the 19th. It was mailed off to the mother with one erroneous address, that one, I'm coming back and sent out another one. She got that, another 27th, I think it was. And so, I'm not sure, because you got two different owners of the same property, which date do we end up going by? In one case, it could be on the 8th here, that if things aren't cleaned up, then the city can end up going in and cleaning the stuff up. Or if we have to go by the date that the other owner was notified, then that's gonna be about another week later.
And how long is the process, from the first letter to when you actually clean?
When they, we send the letter out, when they're notified, the way it is, then they've got 20 days to basically request a hearing before you, and in nutshell, that hearing would end up being, I declared it was nuisance because it's a mess. They have to come in and say, convince you that the judge, jury, that, yeah, it isn't a mess, we shouldn't have to do anything, or yes, it is. Now, when they make that request, then they have, the board has to have that hearing within 30 days. But if you stretch everything out to extremes, I'm not saying the board would, but you're talking almost two months. But at this point, nobody's come in yet, but they still got a couple of days to make that.
And so then the other question is, so if I have a horse trailer in my backyard with junk, can I take it out to the city dump? Will they take that? Or where do I, what do I do with it? What do I do with a car that I no longer want?
Can anyone, if it's part of the, the little thing that?
The landfill will take it.
You can't donate it like Dan said, the fire department can use for some of their freight.
Because that's always been a question too, is, you know, there's a horse trailer, and if I don't have a pickup to haul it away anymore, how do I get rid of it? And I'm hoping that's part of the problem, that they just don't know where it should go. But if I had it, I would find out where to go, but some people might not.
Yeah, or if it's just a load of junk, it depends on what's in there. You have to run the landfill, but it depends upon how it's put in there, because you have to have one area metal and another area also, and stuff in another area. You end up, you could collapse around, you can get rid of everything that's in there in some kind of orderly manner.
And I guess all we can do is keep working on it and encourage people in the community, if they have a situation they don't like, to let us know and we can start the process if we consider it a nuisance. And maybe we need to look at that ordinance and try and.
Do something so that the process gets shortened up a little bit.
I agree, we'll have to look at that. Okay, any other comments? Okay, access improvement, okay?
Thank you. I'm here to beg from the city. If we can put some kind of material, and I'm going to call on the property an alley, and it's behind our yard, Jim Block's yard, and part of Tanner Getz's yard, which is truly railroad-owned property. But I'm gonna call it an alley, because our public thinks it's an alley. And the public uses it as an alley, or maybe a street even, with the amount of traffic. Now, this has picked up in the last three years to almost a condition where it's unbearable. And we will get traffic through there early mornings, never know when it's gonna come through. And our situation is, when they come through, it kicks up such a dust in that area between Blocks, our place, and Tanner Getz's, that the whole, if there is no wind blowing, it just hangs in the air. An example is, I can come out in the morning, and it's mornow since I'm home. I can wash our patio and patio furniture off, and sometimes by noon, I have to wash it again. We cannot have our windows open, because we don't know when this traffic will come through. And of course, it's really bad if the wind comes from the south. Now, I'm just asking that if we could, if you folks could see to it, to get, and I'm gonna suggest the milled-off asphalt and put back there 10 feet wide by 3 inches thick by 200 feet long, that's 18 and a half cubic yards. I would hope that that would solve the problem. Many of these vehicles that go through there, there's motorcycles, four-wheelers, golf carts, and vehicles we don't even know who owns them. They don't live in the neighborhood. Yes, and ourselves, we drive through there ourselves, but usually try, drive really slow, you know, but it kicks up the dust. And if you want to know what kind of dirt is back there, I did bring a sample. Now, you can see through that jar, so I would suggest you don't open it, but you could just tip it once and see what happens. I would say that 95% of that sample there would go through the 200 sieve, if you were gonna do a sieve analysis. That means it's like telecom power. I know that I spoke about this problem before. There's no, really no practical way to restrict the traffic. There's people from the ambulance crew, instead of driving the pavement, they'll drive through there. I don't know, you know, it's, you just can't restrict.
And Ken, you were saying this, this is railroad?
It is railroad right of way. Right, Monty, thank you for putting this up. We live here with this red patio, and it stretches from about here up to Tanner's driveway here. Now, I like to park my boat right back here, and that is on railroad property. But I've been doing it for 30 years. And I think that mail person who delivers US mail, the garbage truck, and the street sweepers certainly would appreciate this whole street having no vehicles on it, and they come through to do their work. Well, this is railroad property. This is an open public street down here to the railroad. And down here at the ambulance, on the east side of Chuck Dolls, is an open public street right down to the railroad right of way. Now, this here is private property. I, I'll say, go out and I'll even make an assumption that the railroad would not mind if there was some kind of service and put on their property to cut down that dust. They come through there very seldom, very seldom. I would say if the railroad people, I see them back there three, four times a year, that's it.
Is this condition limited just to that 200 feet that you mentioned, or is it the same hallway along the whole?
No, it's like this 200 feet from Tanner's approach here on over to just a little bit west. This is Jim Block's camper, just a little bit to the west of it. And the reason I say it's only this stretch, this 200 feet, I don't know how, why, but somehow railroad ballast got spread down, and you can see the difference, sort of a durge material down to here, and there's some of it spread down here, right down into here. I don't, really, I don't know how it got there. If the railroad actually did it, or someone did it as their own personal project, I don't know.
Do you know if there's ever been any conversation with the railroad with regard to the state of that access road?
No, I, well, I had a conversation, they came through a year or two ago, they were doing some maintenance on it with a blade, because he, the individual, his job was to see that they could get their vehicles through there, and he was just blade-ing in the area. And that was his job, I mean, that, he had, he didn't know anything else about it. That's all we talked about was, he was getting that bladed up for that, for rail repairs.
That's the one that was by Terry's.
Pardon?
By Terry's house over there too.
Terry's down there.
Yeah, where he puts out his Christmas lights. He has it at, it'd be to the east of you.
Yep.
Yeah.
And behind Terry's house, there is that, it isn't the big crushed granite, it's smaller, about half-inch to quarter-inch crushed granite that is spread in that alleyway there. Where it is spread.
Well, you can visibly see it by the overhead picture.
And I guess my only concern is, first off, it's railroad property, right? I mean, we're making an improvement on railroad property, and if we, if we vote to do this, is everyone in town gonna say, well, my alley is making dust? I mean, mine is not, it doesn't affect me at all, but I don't know. Is it somewhere where you want to start going? Are we gonna do alleys in town? Or the other little roads that aren't gravelled or paved? I don't know.
We talked about.
No, I think we have, we have.
We have talked about it.
We do alleeways and stuff that are, that are city.
Okay, and that's my question, I mean, I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying, we need to be careful how far you go in one area, and then if you're gonna do a little piece, the next week or the next meeting, are we gonna have the other three come and say, well, you did this piece, why didn't you go all the way down to the end? I, you know, it's just, food for thought, I'm, I know it creates dust. I've seen it, when people have drive by there, I live right a block away, I've seen the dust hang there. It also hangs when they come straight off of the road and go out to Enerbase. There's a lot of dust coming from there also. I mean, a lot.
The Riverside Road.
Is bad.
Is bad.
Yeah.
But if we're, this isn't an answer.
Yeah.
It's maybe just a company zone. City has already set a precedence, precedence of putting improvement material on railroad property from the library east out to, that would be 4th Avenue east. That has been done years back, but it's been done. And as far as I know, the railroad has never said, shame, shame, you're making improvements on our property.
Oh, nobody would, yeah.
The only, the only time they didn't make a comment with that, really, the Kim stock probably, when they were doing the crossings there, they were almost thinking of making us block that road off, because the way the crossing arms come down, if people could turn around on the backside.
And there really is no way to restrict?
And avoid that, and avoid the crossing.
There's no way to restrict traffic back there, like, I don't know how, putting signs up or see if that lessens it, or, because you don't want to cut off access, because a lot of the drakers' backyards is.
Or that you'd be cutting off at the end of the access, you know.
Well, not putting up a fence or anything. Well, not putting up a fence or anything.
No, but for the alleys, I mean, you put up a sign, and it's not our property.
Right.
You know, and that's another whole can of ruins.
Yeah.
I'm almost reluctant to say this, it's a way to end. But, I mean, with dealing with railroad, it's one of those, yeah, it's a big thing for something. But dealing with the railroad, if you don't ask, I mean, don't ask them, you know, I mean, just go and do it if you don't ask them about. But if you go to, if you went to ask them, I'm almost afraid what they would end up coming back with, say, okay, you wanna use the property for an alley, what are you willing to give us? And if we just go and do it and be done with it, I mean, it's been that way for, I think it's been, there's been access back to people using it, I can represent it. I was gonna say, since I've been here and that's.
I agree with Steve, it's, when you're dealing with the railroad, it's easier to say I'm sorry than just to get permission because, oh, you know, they, they may give a permit for people to travel back there, but with permits comes big fees. And in this case here, yes, the folks that live in the home where Glenn Iverson used to live, they parked back there. When Mike Fonda lived there, he parked back there, Iverson did, Jim blocked us. I take the boat back there, Tanner accesses it quite often. Reinhardt, right?
Yeah, John.
John, he accesses it back there all the time.
Ken, is that something that, that you and your, your adjoining neighbors there may consider providing funds to, you know, I know with, when we did the, the parking lot over there at the Bison Bar and Grill, that group paid for, for some of that crushed material from the city to put in there?
Well, that's a nice thought, but I'll tell you, I missed the boat last July, I was out of town on vacation. But the milled asphalt that came off Fourth Street in front of our homes, we paid for that through special assessments. It was used by the community. It was milled off, I don't know where it went. That would've been the time to ask for that asphalt to be placed back there. Now, new asphalt was put down, and as soon as the special assessments come out, we will be paying for that offshore. So the asphalt that was milled off, that we already paid for as residents.
And, and, and that is used for, for city projects throughout caisson and stuff like that? So it wasn't like it was thrown away or anything?
Oh, I, I realize, yeah, I realize.
So, so it's used, it's used in, in other areas? It's not charged to, to city residents and stuff for, for the use of it on alleyways or, or other applications where it's used throughout the city?
I understand that, and that's why I'm referring this to as an alleyway. Just because there's no practical way to inform all the public that they're really driving on railroad property. And frankly, if we, if it's shut off from public access, it would have to be shut off all the way down here by Vern's Body Shop. And then all those vehicles, campers, everything would be sitting on the street.
Like, and, and not to be real, but they would only be sitting on the street for a while because ordinance doesn't say that they can only be. I mean, it's not the city's job to make sure you have a place to park your camper. I mean, did, I mean, let's just, I just wanna put that out there, it's not our job to make sure that because you're using an alley that's not really an alley, that we have to make sure you have someplace to park your camper. Because there's a lot of people who park in the summertime on the streets, but in the wintertime, they have to.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so I just wanna make that clear that.
Ordinance would have to be.
We wouldn't pass it simply because we're gonna save ourselves some headache down the road, I mean, it's.
Yeah, well, I, absolutely, I agree with you.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and I, I was gonna talk about later, when we bring it up, now, that street has got a new overlay of pavement. We've got residents that aren't using blocks under their boats, campers, et cetera. We have one of our city workers bringing in a picture, Monty, and just a boat on a new overlay sunk in the pavement. So, I'd rather personally, throw, there's a picture right there. That's on a new overlay, and that's just from a boat. I personally, I'm gonna stick my neck out and say I'd be personally willing to, to have some overlaying in the back there, jeopardize that versus a brand-new overlay street with more vehicles parked on it, or boats, or that people don't put a block that's longer than their, you know? That's just, that's my opinion, I guess.
I think it'd be a hard one.
But I do understand.
Yep.
If you do it there, and it's like, well, what about me?
I mean, if we do decide, if you do vote on this and, and pass it, just be prepared for more citizens in the community coming up to us and asking us for the same privilege of having that in their alleys that are throwing dust at this time, because there will be, there will be more. So, what are the wishes of the board?
I think there's more than two-hundred feet there, Ken. Looking at the pictures from Tanner's house to the west, looks like it needs it.
Well, I, I was counting on the minimum of two-hundred, you know, it, it could feather out to maybe a hundred fifty feet on each end, it, it could be three-hundred, you know?
You mean, get by with way less than three inches? Did you say three inches?
I said three inches, but ten feet wide, wouldn't have to be any wider than that.
What are the wishes of the board?
I'd be willing to go ten feet wide and try it at just a feather inch and see where it goes from there. I don't think it's growling, it's gonna take three inches, personally. That's just, I don't know, maybe I'm totally wrong, I don't know.
Now, well, I use three inches for a calculation, because an inch is pretty hard to lay.
Yeah, I mean, you're not gonna get a fine inch, but.
Was that a motion, or?
Yeah, that's a motion.
We have a motion on the floor. There is a motion on the floor. Will it die to the lack of a second? Okay.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
You run, I'll take that.
Okay, reports, water sewer?
All right, we can do this.
Okay. The street and cemetery?
Where do you want me to start? All right, well, I'll start, since I brought it up, I'm gonna start with the picture that Monty brought up. I don't know if we want to play a public ad in the paper, but if that's coming just from a boat on one of our streets that just got overlaid. We're gonna have, we're gonna have, it's gonna be long summer, and we're already gonna, we're gonna catch that right now.
Do we, do we have anything in, in the write-ups right now that say that you can't?
I mean, if, if, you know, I, I don't know how to, I mean, like I said, in my doings with unhooking a trailer or anything, I put a lock underneath.
Sure.
You're not gonna get people to do that, every one of them. I don't know, I'm just looking for suggestions.
Maybe, maybe just the, the conversation with the board here, and Dan's reporting the minutes of the, the meeting, you know, short of developing an ordinance or anything like that. I think it, it's just good practice for anybody, putting a trailer down or anything like that out on the streets, or even, you know, putting a motorcycle out on the streets when you put the kickstand down in a hot asphalt, you could potentially ride to that, so.
A biker, you only do that once, and the bike tips over the first time, they learn, they say, I won't ever do that again, so might have. But anyway, I don't know if there's anything in the ordinance that says that you can't just do that, but I think there might be something in a broader sense, as far as damaging the streets. That's, I mean, that's causing damage to the streets, so.
That says, that says if you damage the street, then you're, you're held liable for that?
I think, like I say, I'm, I'm not sure how, how, but there, there is something in there with damaging the streets.
I think I would personally.
Like I said, it's not a broad.
Friendly reminder, because we've got a lot of voters, a lot of campers.
Sure.
People, I, I don't know.
I think, I think it warrants, you know, the discussion that, that we as citizens need to take care of, our streets, and that if we choose to, to park a camper, or a boat, or anything that could damage the street, that we put down appropriate blocking or whatever.
And that's not, you know, you know, what is the appropriate type of blocking? I mean, your block could sit through too, you know?
It was literally just, there's like all the ordinance that we have. I think in the summertime, it's two days maximum time.
Yeah, forty-eight hours, you're supposed to move.
You know, unless we got campers and boats that stay out there for, for the whole day.
The whole week.
Summertime, you know?
I've got a neighbor down the street who, it's, it's pretty clear with the power cord coming out to the camper on the street there, that it's staying there a little longer than what is appropriate.
That's something you wanna talk to, Mr. Nolan.
Yeah.
Because I think we need to.
And if nothing else, a flyer, take to the camper door that says, here's our ordinance, you know? Forty-eight hours, you have to move it, even if you.
I'll let him drive around town.
That's right.
You're sticker all the way though. You know, you don't have a lot of other things that are doing. But actually, you probably have two of them, two flyers, I mean, you have one that says, block it up, and the other one, thank you, you block it up properly, stop it up, and work it up for two days.
Yep.
The choice is yours.
Maybe show that to Chuck and say, you wanna deal with, now, are you, are you gonna pay for that?
Is that, is that a Chuck thing, or is that a Ryan thing? For these.
Well, if it be an ordinance use, I mean, that would, would that fall under the.
Yeah, but even, you know, if it's a hundred degrees of, on a fresh overlay like that, I could go put a boat out there, and within, within a couple hours, it's gonna sink in there. So it may not always be an extended stay issue.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's what we're going to do with this.
That's, I'm just looking for ideas, because it's not.
And are there that many campuses and boats parked on the street? Can you not hit, like, every one of them as you're driving around and, and, you know? Take a week and have somebody, I don't care if it's Chuck in disguise, or, and just put a little note on their boat and say, here you go, this is what we're, we're telling you. Because there can't be that many, there's a lot of them parked out at the lake for the summer, so. But yeah.
So, food for thought. Second thing, let's see, that's done. I'm gonna go to, I mentioned last meeting, I have Ronnie get pricing on a new center in replacement for the old, metal one we have, it's pretty much weathered. I do have a quote here, but I did get word from Jerry over in our R C traveling to Rapid, I don't remember if it was today or yesterday, that I'm gonna have Ronnie check on. He saw one of these Swanson stainless steel Sanders, didn't stop to look at it at the Pfeiffer auction lot there in Bowman. I'm gonna have Ronnie check on that first, but I do, if I don't, if it's not what we need, then I'll propose this the next meeting. Third thing is, our sixth lane is in need of some repairs, two of them.
That's not a new business.
Oh, yes, it is, sorry, okay, I'll, I'll leave it there. The last thing is, our city guys were painting these main, painting stripes today. And I know we've gotta stop sign coming from Interbase this way, but the Main Street terminates to Fourth at the corner. And there was a handful near misses that they saw. Another four we got, we wanted a yield sign there. Is it just gonna be during the arming season? I don't know. And it was, and it was coming, well, that's just it. I mean, because you don't have anything coming from Fourth this way, and it sounded as though it was that. I don't know, how, how, you know, what we, I don't know.
You're talking, you're talking some type of yield or, or something on, on that, the hard curve there?
Well, yeah, it's near miss, I mean, there's nothing coming from the north-south, like, if you're going shooting Interbase.
Oh, if you're going down.
There's nothing coming from the west, going east to the curb. The only thing that we got there is the stop sign coming from the south, from Riverside, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know how you would put signage there.
Southbound traffic must yield to westbound.
I don't know.
I don't know, I did it different places, where they have it that way.
I don't know.
Thinking if you see a truck coming, you're gonna yield the map watch.
I think he's talking, he's talking about coming out Main.
Yeah, yeah, because then the truck's going in, so you're coming out Main.
Oh, is there, I don't even know, is there a stop sign? I mean, those guys must be stopping for the railroad traffic.
Yeah, but it's, 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 if, there's nothing coming from the north to the south.
You're heading south, and you're just going straight across, and a guy's coming west, eastbound on Main.
Southbound traffic.
I don't know.
Yield to the right, I mean, that's.
Or like I said, it's just gonna be.
Have you?
There's a rule to the road, you yield to the right.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, realistically, the southbound traffic should be yielding to the right away.
Oh, that's kind of a straight.
You're making, yes, you're doing a straight shot, the person coming out Main is making a turn. And then if somebody's going straight through, like, the person going straight through on a road is out the right way when it's making a turn, kind of.
It should almost be coming off of Main that you have some type of yield sign or something like that. If you're heading eastbound on Main, coming by the.
Realistically terminates and moves to Fourth.
And people who don't live here, or haven't been living here for a long time, stop there. I've seen a lot of people stop there, too.
I catch my, just did right, I catch my side, turn my blinker on, turn off Fourth and wheel around the corner.
But I agree going this way, I'd, I'd rather see it in feel.
Yep.
Than straight through.
Yeah, that would maybe make more sense.
Kind of food for thought, what you guys think?
If I were to do anything, that's what I would do, is I'd put some type of signage there, right, right by the park, because you're heading east sign. And, and, and I don't know if it's appropriate to just put a yield sign there, and that says it all?
I wonder if we have any yield to through traffic. Sorry, is it checking? Could you check again, Monty?
Yeah.
Okay. And, let me see, no, we have six lanes down Agenda Road here, wait, so like.
I got one to tag on you here, so Shannon and I went out Friday, yeah, it was Friday afternoon. Flagged out the area first with the new road in the cemetery. Wanted, Ron asked to go out and flag out a twelve-foot script that would end up running round others, that's, I'm not, I'm not sure. He's not sure if they're gonna be up there, I'm just, I guess somebody willing to cut the sign, whether or not, if you want it, knowledge will dry it out. And so hopefully after they get their crushed out there, at the Lagoon side, well, they'll have material to put in there and sort of work on that, that's.
So, if we never talked about saving the sign, do that. I like, do we have any place to use it now?
I don't think, I don't think it's salvageable if you were to cut it right now.
No, it's too dry.
If not, it went through by also.
Yeah.
In my mind, that would be, that would be the same possible for use out there at the cemetery.
Right, backfill's, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and just jump up.
Good.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve.
Anything else?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay, please, fire.
Stan sent me an update today, said that they have, they, on May twenty-third, they had grass fire and tanker training. And they're still planning on doing some follow-up training over at the old hospital building. They're just waiting for asbestos abatement at this time. That's all I have to report to you.
Okay, and with financing and busing, we have, we had the open house at the bus barn. There was a, it was a good turnout. It was a nice evening. The people are out there and saw the new bus barn. And then with that, we also had a bid on the bus that we're trying to get rid of. It was a bid of a hundred and fifty-seven seventy-seven from one gentleman. So, we are, we can just accept the bid, right? We don't need to vote on it or anything, yeah. We have decided to accept the bid. Just to, we don't need it all anymore, so. That would be all that I have. HCD?
HCD. Uh, all right, well, you saw, you see that they're moving along, ran out of shingles, right, Monty?
We're done.
You got it, you finished. I haven't been by there, I didn't go by there, couldn't look close enough this morning, but. M U was in to put some transformers in, they're gonna probably be in either this week or next week, and transfer the pole from the, I guess it would be on the south side of, the lake pole from the south side on the alley to the north side. So that's coming along. Actually, I think everything is really coming along really pretty well in there. I'm not exactly certain how soon the Jip Creek crew will be in, but they're, and that's, that would be for the old foundation or flooring, get that all leveled, but that'll, that'll be happening fairly soon too, so. The only, the only kind of negative thing is, is that our project manager who we've worked with, Jason Schmidt, ended up having to resign from Williams Builders. He was great to work with, and some found issues that he has to take care of, so. We're gonna be working with a new person starting next week, and actually that person will be out on site. And I, I trust that everything's gonna be, you know, it'll work just fine, but Jason was a, he certainly was a godsend. He was a great guy to work with, so, wishing well, but I'm not sure what he's gonna do afterwards. And maybe he'll come back to Lagoon some day soon, but things are, are moving very well in there. And as far as, I can give a, I'll give a little bit of an update, it looks like the hotel project is going to probably happen. The local loan committee approved it, and the next step is, is going to get moved on to USDA for approval. So, and, so, we're hoping that, that all materializes. The big piece, the big thing was getting equity in place, and that has taken place.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I don't.
Okay. On to old business, property deed to HCD.
This, Pat, Attorney Donovan prepared the warranty deed pursuant to the joint powers agreement with the HCD to transfer that property for the hotel project to HCD if it does not materialize by the deadline of April two thousand nineteen. The property would then have to revert back. We still got the wrong description, legal description, so that'll have to be correct prior to signing the deed.
Monty is the new LLC, I said I can't see.
It just has City of Hazen and Hazen Community Development.
Oh, Hazen Community Development, excuse me, I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
There's no worry on that.
So, other than correcting the description of the shit to, cause it's no longer lot two block one Lewis and Clark subdivision. It's part of expedition to state's.
No.
Isn't, no, that is not.
No, but it's lot two, like it's lot two block one Lewis and Clark, second.
Second edition, second edition. So, we'll have that corrected prior to maybe the signing with, if he takes action.
And this needs to take place before?
I think it's part of the finance, it's already part of the finance.
Yeah. One other wish of the board?
Motion to approve with the correction to the lot two, lot one, support second edition.
We do have a motion on the floor?
A second.
And a second, any discussion? Vocal?
Pat.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Um, ten B is propane bid.
We did receive bids from Farmers Union Oil of Hazen and Fitterer Oil. A bid of Farmers Union Oil for supplying a propane to the properties listed in the advertisement, eighty-three cents per gallon on a keep full basis. And we did some Fitterer Oil. Fitterer Oil bid of eighty-nine point nine cents per gallon, billed on a monthly statement. This would be effective to May thirty-first of next year. Senate's currently has bid, has approved last year.
Which for the board?
Make a motion, make a Farmers Union bid at eighty-three cents a gallon. It's just, it's the same program.
Yes.
For either, either entity, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, is there a discussion? Vocal?
Taylor.
Aye.
Stern. Aye. Pat.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now onto new business, mower, six plate repair.
Okay, so our six plate is in ready of repair, and we got two options, repair our existing, or I've got a bid on a new one. And while I've thought about this, with the use we use it for, I think would be in the best interest to repair the old one, or existing one instead of pushing new. Monty, how long do you, Steve, maybe you know, how long have we had that six, I've heard fifteen to twenty years from Ryan.
Two thousand and one, Ryan.
Yeah, so, um, the bid on a new one from Hazen Motor Farm Equipment is ten thousand three hundred. But the city guys did get what is needed, they backed toward out to the tune of two thousand seven sixty-seven, sixty-one.
Actually, that might be just a little bit low. There were just a couple of these ring, O-rings or whatever they need, so. Then wouldn't it exceed three thousand dollars, Dave? And Dave would just repair it in-house? Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. So I make a motion that we repair existing not to exceed three thousand dollars, and repair it in-house.
I'm assuming the rest of the machine is, is in reasonable shape.
Yeah, I mean, this.
And everything like that. This here is just your PM type stuff, replacing bearings and.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Stuff like that.
It sounds like when talking with Ronnie, I mean, they pretty much tore it apart. You know, I turned and asking him how much we use it, you know, around the Lagoon and occasional at the Dorian. I'm like, is it worth ten, three? Can we maybe pigeonhole some of that extra money and put it towards a truck if it comes? You know, ask us the right truck we want, so.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there discussion? Vocal?
Pat.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Stern. Aye. Wolf.
Aye.
Motion carried. Payment of the bills.
We should want a couple of, four pages of new bills that I wanted for today. Those, those windshields, is that three separate windshields? No, it was just split between the three separate funds, because that's not shared, because we. Gotcha, okay. Gotcha, yeah. That's great.
I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Join the motions, join the motion to approve.
Put a second?
I'll second, yes, Jason will second.
Any discussion? Vocal?
Stern. Aye. Pat.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.